Whoops. Get off. Where are you? Pauls?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. I'd invite everybody to stand now for the pledge and remain standing. We have a special event here today. We have the Heartland Family Service Youth Links Color Guard here to present our colors. And we'll now proceed with that event.
Forward march. Carry colors. Ready, cut. Here's your colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry colors. Ready, cut. Order colors. Ready, cut. Retire colors. Forward march.
Thank you. Councilman Jerem, invocation please.
Yes, kind of a bifurcated invocation. The community's lost a couple of really neat people this past week. One was Mr. Born, whose son, I think, people have seen down here regularly, John Born's dad. He touched a lot of people in the community and made Omaha a better place. The other one's a young mom, dentist in Omaha, Kate Coffey Olachowski, who, until recently, lived as one of my neighbors. She died too very young and will be greatly missed, not only by her immediate family, her husband and children, but her extended family and her neighbors. The other part of the invocation I want to make is today there's elections for officers of the council for the next two years. And I'm always personally intrigued by the amount of interest that comes with it, given that the position of president, while entitled to great respect and the possibility of becoming mayor in the event that the mayor's out of town or something unfortunate would happen or the mayor would cease the official duties, really isn't all that sometimes the influence over what we do and how we work actually in fact functions. So what I'd like to say is regardless of what happens here today, as we move forward the next two years as a body, it's important that there's give and take, there's compromises on the key issues that we have to face because whether it's the huge poverty and violence issues that we're seeing in northeast and southeast Omaha that affect the city as a large, whether the public safety issues or infrastructure and street issues, it's important that we find ways to come together and put whatever happens here today behind as we move forward. Thank you.
City Clerk, certified publication of Daily Record, Official Newspaper of Omaha, on June 5th, notes where your council, regular city council meeting June 9, 2015. A current copy of meetings act is posted white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Too many papers here, okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. And we have three things before we get started here on the regular agenda to note. First, I want to recognize some students that are with us today and that Councilman Jerem and Councilman Thompson and I had a chance to speak with. Professor Paul Landau from UNO is here with area high school students. I understand we have North High School, South High School, and Bryan represented here today. So we appreciated your interest in local government and I understand you go to Washington tomorrow, so wish you safe travels. I want to recognize you here today. Thanks for being here. The second item is I want to also recognize our interim library director, Lupe Meyer, who has decided to retire again on June 19th. We appreciated him returning to service during this interim period of time for our libraries and think he's done a great job. Lupe, thanks for all you've done for the city of Omaha. And then the last thing, if my colleagues would just give me a second here. Just a point of personal privilege, if you don't mind, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for the last two years serving as president. I think it's something we should all be proud of in terms of our accomplishments for the Omaha City Council. We initiated an important conversation about poverty and unemployment that I know we all feel strongly about and are going to see through to the end in coming years and in coming weeks and months. We also passed several new labor contracts and budgets smoothly with the mayor. We provided additional funding for new police officers in our library system. We passed a new land bank entity and legislation that'll better address condemned housing in our city and across our city, things I know we all care about and our constituents care about. We passed a new boarding house ordinance that I think is very important to public safety in the community and to ensure safe living environments. And we passed a new property crime ordinance that will deter neighborhood burglaries and copper theft. These are just some of the things we've done in the last couple of years that I think have been important steps moving the city forward. And from an administrative perspective, I'd note, these are things that don't always hit the agenda or get much discussion, but I did want to note we also, despite long-term civil service retirements on the city council staff, handled that well as a body. It remained under budget despite some of those payouts. In fact, about $160,000 under budget in 2014, about 13% of our budget. But more importantly, we hired entirely new professional staff for the city council that diversified our staff and will serve constituents throughout the city for a much longer time than all of us will be here. And I think that's a very important addition to the city. I don't recognize them here since they're sitting in the front row as well. So thank you, guys, for all you're doing. And not the least of which is our new chief of staff, Jim Dowding, who has done a tremendous job over the couple of years, too. So with that, I'm looking forward to working with the next president and vice presidents. And I know that together, we'll keep working together and moving our city forward. So, Mr. Clerk, I would call up the next agenda item, which is the election of officers.
Okay. The first thing we need to do is elect a temporary chair. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, I will now read the procedure. For the benefit of the members of the public and press, I would like to briefly outline the matter in which the elections of the office of president and vice president will be conducted. It has been done in the past. The voting will be conducted by secret ballot. Each council member will be given a ballot and asked to mark the ballot casting one vote. The ballots will be collected, recorded, and then read aloud by the city clerk. Any council member receiving four or more votes will become the new officer. This procedure will be followed until one member receives four or more votes. We will begin the election in the office of president. The newly elected president will then take the chair and directly proceed with the election of the office of vice president. So if we will pass out the ballots? Jim, do you want to do that? There we go.
He's got the ball. Jim, pick it up.
On the first ballot, Ben Gray receives four votes, Franklin Thompson, three votes. Ben is our new president of the council. We'll now proceed with the election of the office of vice president. The results of the first ballot for vice president, Gary Gurnett, three votes, Chris Jerem, four votes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before we proceed, just a short couple of comments from myself. As you all know, this city is made up of the business community, philanthropic community, and various other entities within this city that makes it grow and hopefully makes it become a better city. My intention is to work with all groups and individuals, the business community, the mayor's office, my colleagues on the council, and others as we continue to move forward, hopefully aggressively, because we have a number of issues that are really pressing that we really need to deal with. We received this morning a briefing as it relates to how our streets are, and we've got to do more than just talk about what our streets are about. We have to do something about being about it. We also have to continue the work that I think was started by our previous president. And I want to thank Mr. Festerson for his diligence and his duty as president of this council. I agree with him that a lot of the conversation that has begun, especially around poverty, was started under his leadership, and we're going to continue to have that discussion because we have to. If we don't address poverty, poverty's going to address us and it's not going to address us in a comfortable way. So we've got to deal with those kinds of things, but we've got to do it as a collective with collaborations across the board, with the business community, philanthropic community, neighborhood associations, neighborhood alliances, and others. We've got a lot of work to do and we need to roll up our sleeves and continue to be aggressive about getting that work done. That's my intention for the next two years, is to make sure that that work, or at least we get thoroughly, it gets thoroughly talked about, but more than talked about, that we plan some efforts to really address some of the major problems that our city continues to face, including poverty and streets. And I want to thank my colleagues on the council, and I just want us to continue to move forward and keep things moving in the right direction and addressing issues as they come up. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, colleagues on the council. Mr. Vice President?
Yes, I'd also like to thank my colleagues for their vote for vice president. It was not something that I campaigned or sought to do but was asked to consider, I think because extrapolating from what I could cipher from people who did talk to me, that my colleague to my right sometimes is very passionate about how he approaches advocacy. And not that they wanted me to literally sit on you at times, but they did come to me as the heaviest member of the council and say, "You might be best qualified to do that." And no, all kidding aside, there's, as we've approached advocating for similar issues, there's been people that thought that there can be more temperate approaches to things. And so they've kind of asked me to kind of work with my friend here to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and that we provide that advocacy, but with moderation when necessary. So not in any way to, in any way suggest that I don't love your passion, but it's something that I've said, sure, I'd be happy to work with Ben to make sure that as we work through these processes, particularly the ones we've been talking about lately on unemployment and poverty, we can see that when we all come together and we give a little bit, we don't maybe have, in baseball parlance, a grand slam or a homerun, but maybe a triple or a double, and you advance the cause by doing that. And you can do it in a respectful way, mindful of a variety of opinions and input. And so I'll strive my best to make sure as we move forward as a city that those voices and stakeholders are all heard and have a voice. Not that we'll always agree, but hopefully we can come to consensus as we tackle these issues.
He's pretty good at sitting on me, too, though, but anyway, go ahead. Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Zoning ordinance on final agreement plan for attachments. Item number nine, ordinance to approve a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Pacific Street West to allow the development of three commercial buildings, an apartment complex, plaza area, and accompanying lot line adjustments located southeast of 204th and Pacific Streets, providing state development standards. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Oh, is there one? Oh, I'm sorry. Opponent? Neutral? Yeah, just... Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Kalasek. It's spelled K-A-L-A-S-E-K. 1226 South 200th Avenue. And I'm not really an opponent. I'm here, I guess I'm a little nervous, so bear with me, but I've never seen the plans before. We just, my wife and I just moved there about a year ago, and I knew it would be developed someday, and I'm not against that at all. I just have never seen the plans. I don't know what it looks like. My property backs up to this new area. I found out here two weeks ago that we have nice trees on our berm. OPBD is going to cut those down, so now I'm going to have a full view of this property. And I was just, I would like to see what it looks like and how it's going to affect my view of my backyard. My wife and I worked very hard to get to build a nice home there, and we're close to our grandkids and we love it there. But again, I've never seen what it looks like. I was just told it's going to be amended and there's going to be apartments there and mixed-use property. So the other thing I'd like to have you consider is the traffic. Elkhorn South High School, I don't know if you've ever been there, at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, but it is just unbelievable, the backup that happens in that neighborhood, in our neighborhood and all around that area, because there's only one street in and one street out of Elkhorn South High School. And I don't know what's going to be done there. So I'm kind of concerned about that, not only for the neighborhood but the safety. It gets really backed up there and gets hard to get out of the neighborhood. It's, there's traffic running through the neighborhood on school days, and I'm concerned about that with more apartments and more use there. And again, I'm not against the, I'm not against the building of commercial buildings there. I just would like to see or like to be able to post, so you postpone your vote or whatever. I'm not sure if your procedures postpone your vote, so we get a chance at least to look at what's going to be built there. The other question is, I looked up in the district, who represents me on the council? I couldn't figure that out.
Where do you live?
I live in Tuscan Ridge. It's 1226 South 200th Avenue.
Me.
You do?
The old bald-headed guy.
Okay, all right. So how do I, how do I at least get to look at the plans and show those to my neighbors? Because they're going to be affected, too, by this. I mean, I just don't know how to do that.
It should be, it was attached to the document, but the, our planning director, Mr. Field, do you have, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Can you show that to him, please? Second. If you can look that over, I think we've got a motion and a second to approve it. I think we're going to go ahead and do that, but I think it'll give you an opportunity to look at what you have there.
Wow. Trying to see where I'm at here.
Yeah. Mr. Field?
Here's Dave.
Oh, Dave.
Dave, maybe you could take...
If you can... Yeah, if you could take him over and explain, because it'll take a little longer than we have here, so if you can just take him and explain it to him.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Any other opponents? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and there's been a motion and a second roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Number nine is passed seven to zero. Resolution, great preliminary plats. Ten, resolution, preliminary plat in Tuscan Ridge located southwest of 199th Street and Blue Sage Parkway along attached conditions here, except in preparation to file, it is hereby authorized. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved in seconded roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett? Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 10 is adopted seven to zero. Liquor, item number 11, Lookout Lounge, 320-322 South 72nd Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Mark Jacobs, Anderson, Bresman, and Hoffman, 11440 West Center Road, representing Ghost of Cog LLC, doing business as the Lookout Lounge. I'm here today with owner and manager Kyle Furtwagner. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved in seconded roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson? Gurnett? Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 11 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 12 is MC Gas &amp; Shop, 503 North 33rd Street, package liquor license, new application, old location. We have a request from the applicant to amend that to an off-sale beer license, and you would need to suspend city council rules due to this location next to a park.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, coming here with the applicant, Mike Endawi. This is a C store, 33rd and California, roughly. We originally were going to upgrade this. He's buying it from his cousin, which requires us to come back, or he's been there running it before. We talked to the neighborhood folks. They weren't thrilled with upgrading, so we're going, we asked to leave, to amend, go back and just leave it as a beer-only, packaged beer-only. And I believe that at least the leadership of the neighborhood is satisfied with that. And with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, are there any opponents today? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Suspend the rules first.
Suspend the rules.
Roll call, please.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passes.
Answer for you.
For a second time for potential conflict.
Motion to approve.
Motion to amend first. Yep.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. As amended?
As amended?
As amended.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem? Milton? Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It is passed as amended, six, zero, one, passing. Now we need a motion to reinstate the rules.
Motion to reinstate. Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem? Yeah, you can pass. Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Rules are reinstated. Item number 13, Pauls Millard Sinclair, 13205 Millard Avenue, package liquor license, new application, old location. It is an upgrade.
Public hearing on item 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. This also is a C store. This is on the Millard area. This is, this is an upgrade, but Mr. Larry Bergers here, if you have any questions. They plan to leave the operation completely the way it is, but they did think in service to the customers, they would, they would want to add spirits. So other than that, it's exactly the same as it has been, it's proposed to be the same type of operation. Mr. Bergers here, if you have any questions again.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
I just want to say, that's a landmark in the Millards. Anytime you drive there, you see the store. It's been there for years and hopes of years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Been moved in seconded roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed second time for a potential conflict of interest. Item 13 is adopted, six, zero, one, passing.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. President and Vice President.
Thank you.
Item number 14, Bernie's Pizza, 5092 South 132nd Street, on sale beer license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Greg Abud, 6530 South 84th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Can answer any questions that you might have on this, but it's just essentially a transfer same use as before.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
14 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 15, Soho Lounge, 12143 West Center Road, Suite 38, request permission for an addition of an irregularly shaped outdoor area to the west.
It's Quidjo County on 15801 Mendison Street.
It's Quidjoe County on 15801 Mendison Street. I was just putting an amendment for an addition to the, but I forgot to put in my original application.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing today, so proponents, you were a proponent and you got your name in. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fifteen is approved, seven to zero. Item number sixteen, Fleming's Prime Steakhouse and Wine Bar, 140 Regency Parkway, request permission to appoint Nathaniel Clementson manager. We have a late, he had a family emergen, he called and had a family emergency and if you wish to lay it over, you can. If you want to pass it, you can. He's, he'd be happy to come next week if you want, want him here.
Let me follow the procedure first and then we'll see where we go. Are, are there any other, are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded, roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sixteen is approved, seven to zero. Item number seventeen, Golden Palace Restaurant, 4040 North 132nd Street, request permission to appoint Kenny Kao, manager.
Yes.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Your name?
Name and address?
Manager Kenny Kao, address 17113 Amnestry, Omaha, 61, 68116.
And are you the proposed manager?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Any, any other proponents today? Seeing none, are there any opponents today? Public hearing is concluded.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eighteen is laid over one week. Nineteen is Buckey's Express, number fifty-eight, 5718 North West Radial Highway, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Deesing. I'm representing, yeah, there you go, representing Buckstein, doing business at Buckey's Express. I reside at 1005 East Aberdeen Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046.
Thank you. Are there any, any other proponents, please? Seeing none, any opponents? Step to the side, please. Thank you.
My name's Sarah Davy. I live at 3344 North 58th Street. My neighborhood didn't have much say with the development of the Old Louis property. However, I've learned that certain requirements may prohibit this establishment from a liquor license. I ask the council to just consider the fact that I will present. Within the application of a liquor license, question number eight, under the applicant's information states, is the premise to be licensed within 150 feet of a church, school, hospital, home for the aged, or indigent persons, or veterans, their wives and children, or within 300 feet of a college or university campus? In my eyes, the word premise entails all of the property. However, Benson High School is clearly over 150 feet away. There is a church to the south, Benson Presbyterian, which could be in question. But directly to the west is Teen Challenge. This is undeniably the definition of a home for indigent persons. Not only is Teen Challenge a home for this, it also exists as a, the depart, as a department of the U.S. Missions Division of Assemblies of God. This category is in the Revenue Service under Religious Educational Charitable Catagories 501-3C. Teen Challenge USA also maintains accreditation standards, curriculum, training, and resources to all Teen Challenge organizations in the United States and Puerto Rico. Bottom line is that the premise is well within 100 feet of the applicant's premises. Recently, Tobacco Hut on Ames was denied their license based upon the 150 feet premise guideline. I urge you to take this into consideration because Teen Challenge is not only a place of education, but also follows religious values.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
You got two Mr. Jerems pulling up right now.
We got two Mr. Jerems.
Go first.
Okay. Mr. Jerem, number, number one, go first.
Thank you. It's, it's still flashing on me, so I don't know what is going to distract me. I don't see Mr. Mungard here, but is Mr. Kratz?
He's here.
Okay.
I'm back here. Between us and I, we'll figure out your response.
The concern was raised that because of Teen Challenge of the Midlands is across the street or next door, that, that there's a rule of the Liquor Commission or a statute that says that the licensed premises cannot be within, I think, honor of 50 feet of a home for the indigent. Whether that would necessarily preclude this application from being granted a license? And the question becomes, is a treatment center for young adults and teens for alcohol or drug use fit within that parameters? And what, what it would take to qualify to prohibit this establishment from having a license?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. The direct answer to your question is no, it would not prohibit the, the acceptance of this application. The prohibition refers to residential living as opposed to simply a treatment center where people come and go.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Festerson?
Thank you. I was going to ask that question as well, but I also have some additional questions made for Mr. Perleback. I know we've discussed the site in particular here. So this is the Old Louis site, which is currently under development, currently under construction. So I did want to take this opportunity to follow up on a few items we've discussed before to make sure they are occurring, what I will call, what I would call concessions that you willingly agreed to for the site and its development and its appearance and layout, that is, in my mind, part and parcel with the liquor license for an establishment like this. So if you wouldn't mind, your name and address, please?
John Perleback, 7315 Mercy Road.
So as we discussed, and this may be a question for the planning department as well, it's under construction, so you received your building permit, which means you've abided by the site plans that we established quite early on, which creates a pretty unique development in terms of what you've done across the city in the past in its appearance and building materials and layout. Can you kind of describe that a little bit, or did you, could you bring an elevation to perhaps?
Yeah, I do. So this is directly off of our building plans. That, that shows what is being built. We haven't built one anywhere yet, and it's a 7,000 square foot store that we're still trying to figure out what's going to be in it, just because it is the first one. It's a little bit of a learning process for us, but it will be, there will be more fresh food, prepared food in it than any of our other stores do have.
And can you describe some of that? Because that is sort of a key interest, I think, of the area and pertaining to the liquor license.
So at our, at our commissary, there'll be sandwiches, fresh fruit, salads, pizza will be prepared on site. And what, what else is on that menu that'll be prepared on site? I don't know yet, but we need to figure that out pretty quick because we want to get that open here in the next, you know, hopefully six to eight weeks.
You're shooting for July, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's our, that's our goal right now.
Okay. So it is, you are offering more by way of food than your typical convenience or typical...
Correct. More, more fresh food items, yes.
That would be appreciated. I know we talked about that. Talk about also the, the appearance. I think what is going up does look like that, as we talked about many months ago with the brick and the entryways there. There's also going to be some opportunities outside for folks to, to have the fresh food and...
Correct, yeah. Well, there'll be seating areas outside. Right now, we're looking at putting it on the front walks. Just because we're a little on the sides yet, we don't know. So right now, the plan is to put picnic tables out in the front, in the front of the store.
And new sidewalks and the landscaping that was part of the plan?
Correct. Yeah, and I've got a landscaping plan here. It's not pretty, but it's what's off the plan.
Okay, from the aerial view?
Yeah.
And those trees will be in those locations?
Correct.
I think that's important to the appearance. Is there also a sidewalk along there?
Along Northwest Radial? Yes.
Yeah, I think that'd be a nice addition, too. And I, I do think for the most part, neighbors would agree, what had happened there, although we, we had intended to get something of a grocery store in there or something of a different development, what is, what was currently there needed to be changed and has changed substantially since you've been there. So that was property that was causing problems, I know, and probably isn't at this point since you have an active presence on there. Last question is security and as it pertains to liquor license. So how will this be monitored? How will we ensure it's a safe environment for the neighborhood? All those things?
I, for, for us, safety is as important as anything. We want people to be in there. It's going to be well lit. It's going to have plenty of cameras monitored from an off-site location. And, and if you look at, at our past with store, like 30th and Ames, we've had security guards there. So if there, if a need arises, we certainly look to, to quell the problem before, before it becomes a bigger problem.
That's a private security force that you employ?
What?
A private security force that you employ?
We had, yes, when, when we needed it, but the cameras and, and the security cameras are run by us.
So there was a situation, who, who comes out?
Who comes up?
Who comes out? If you, if you monitor it and you see a situation, who would address that?
Then if, if there was an issue with onsite, it would be a private security firm or the police.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I, I know that we're meeting afterwards, right? After the meeting on some other issues. Appreciate you sticking around for that. Last thing was, I know you handled the Louis sign, right?
Yes.
And that has been sort of donated to the Benson Business Improvement District or the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Great. I appreciate you doing that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other, there are no other lights?
Okay. I just wanted to explain my vote. I, really an awkward position. I was just with, and my other hat, as a lawyer, someone who is in the youth treatment, in ha, inpatient with the Teen Challenge of the Midlands in Colfax, Iowa, and it's, it's a several month program. And when they get done, they come back to the community. They, they go through the treatment program outpatient at the Benson facility, and then they work for three months as they continue their transition back to healthy living. And so I, my vote today is not a reflection of your business, we'll just say that. It's just, I feel like this person that I know is trying so hard to straighten out his life, I don't know if the temptation next door is something that I'm uncomfortable with, but no reflection on you.
Counsel's pleasure?
Motion.
Was there a motion?
I just wanted to clarify one thing because the opponent brought up that it may be within the 150 feet of the church. Did we clarify that it's not?
It's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Okay. So with any of the other, it's just within 100 feet of Teen Challenge?
Yes.
Are, in...
Is it 100 feet? None?
Well...
What is the distance? I'm...
It's not in, it's not within the Teen Challenge either.
Oh, it's not?
Well, I don't know if it is or not, but I don't think it qualifies for it anyway.
It qualifies, but it doesn't qualify.
Well, it may, it may make a difference to my vote. So I was just curious as to how, how close it is.
We don't, we did not, there's no measurement for Teen Challenge.
So there's no measurement for it.
It's directly across the street. From the, the first plan that you showed, the exit in Ancient Priam, when you are exiting by...
Ma'am, you have to come down and say, oh, Mike.
Yeah, I'm going to come down, yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
If...
And if you identify yourself again, please.
Sarah Davy, 3344 North 58th Street. If you were to be pulling out of Buckey's, you're looking right at Teen Challenge, and then there's a, that's their yard. I mean, it's a street distance, like from here to you, so...
But the, the measurement is from building line to building line, so I don't know what...
So I, well, it says premise, so I would feel the property is part of the premise, but I'm new to this.
And do you work for Teen Challenge by cha...
No, I, I don't. I just live on the street. I'm a teacher, so...
Okay. I mean, thank you for coming down, I, I appreciate that. their yard. I mean, it's a street distance, like from here to you.
But the measurement is from building line to building line, so I don't know what...
Oh, so I, well, it says premise, so I would feel the property is part of the premise, but I'm new to this.
And do you work for Teen Challenge by chance?
No, I don't. I just live on the street. I'm a teacher, so.
I mean, thank you for coming down. I appreciate that. Is most of the people, and I don't know if Councilman Jerem, if you can answer this, are most of them teens? Are they younger people that are in Teen Challenge?
They're younger people, and this particular client's, I think, around twenty.
About seventeen to twenty-five.
And he's charged, I think, with felony DUI at this point, which I think would be the fourth.
Well, I guess my thing would be to ask Buc-Ee's if they would make sure, I mean, I know they're supposed to card everyone, but I think this particular Buc-Ee's is going to have to take extra precautions to make sure that there aren't teens purchasing liquor or there aren't teens outside the store who've paid maybe somebody over twenty-one, if you could step up to, because that is a concern of mine. You have Teen Challenge right across the street.
Definitely.
And they're going to be very tempted to get somebody or to come over to Buc-Ee's, I think, potentially, and make that their stop where they get something. And it's a very valid concern. I'm surprised that there isn't anyone from Teen Challenge here today, to tell you the truth. So could you even maybe tell us how you could take extra steps to make sure that you're not selling to the youth across the street?
Well, once again, Robert Deesing, one zero zero five East Aberdeen Drive, Papillion, Nebraska. I can tell you that we do take steps with all of our stores in that direction. We have a strict policy guideline that every new employee and current employee has to sign off and abide by. And it's not just, we card everybody. We watch for them, purchase, and not allow them to purchase for minors. It's quite extensive how we train our people to do that, and we continue to do that, I'm sure, with that store, or even probably more so.
Because I think that's what it's going to come down to. I think that your employees are going to have a little bit higher responsibility, having Teen Challenge across the street, and that maybe they need to know that they're not required to sell alcohol to everybody. And if they see somebody selling alcohol, and they see youth outside, and they see any kind of exchange, I think that that's a call that's going to need to be made.
Definitely. I mean, it's well within our policies right now, but should definitely be emphasized at that store, and all of our stores for that matter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question. Has Buc-Ee's been cited a number of times?
There have probably been several, I mean, over the years. I can't give you any numbers, but, I mean, it happens.
It's not a concern of yours?
No, no, no. Hey, when you're dealing with thousands of employees over years and years, some of them slip up, of course. We try to keep our policies in place to limit that. There's definitely, they are terminated upon any, you know, not carding or anything like that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Just one question that I have. Is this, is your, this particular Buc-Ee's going to be a twenty-four-hour?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Motion.
Is there a motion?
I would, I think they have abided by the conditions we placed on them as a development.
I think we knew this kind of, thank you. I'm not used to pressing my light. I think they have abided by the conditions we placed on them in terms of development. And I think we all knew this type of development contains a liquor license as an establishment. But I'll be watching very closely as the councilman for that area to make sure it does go well. And if it doesn't go well, that's why we have a liquor committee, and we'll get you in here right away to get that resolved, because that is a sensitive location in general, but also sensitive for the point that Ms. Davie brings up as well. So with that, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Nineteen is adopted, six to one. Item number twenty, Buc-Ee's Express requests permission to appoint Robert Deesing manager of their sixteen stores. One hundred and two oh two Maple Street, twenty-seven sixty-five South Thirteenth Court, forty-eight oh five South one hundred and eighth Street, twenty-five ten South one hundred and thirty-second Street, one oh one North Thirtieth Street, thirty-nine oh nine North one hundred and thirty-second Street, one hundred and thirty-seven thirty-six Q Street, one hundred and seven, one oh seven South Fortieth Street, thirty-four thirty-five South Forty-second Streets, sixty oh three Center Street, twenty-five, twenty-six thirty-five South one hundred and Sixtieth Street, twenty-nine oh one North Seventy-second Street, thirty-fifty-two South one hundred and eight, or South Eighty-fourth Street, ninety-six forty-five Idaho Street, forty-four fourteen North Thirty-first Street, and twenty-two twenty-three South Twenty-fourth Street.
Public hearing on this agenda item is today. Proponents, please.
Once again, Robert Deesing, one zero zero five East Aberdeen Drive, Papillion, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Saying none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of City Council, because I placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda should be taken up by City Council members following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items twenty-one and twenty-two were held on June second, twenty fifteen. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-two are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number twenty-three through twenty-nine are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself, your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Saying none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. No further lights.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-three through twenty-nine are adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven, if agenda item number thirty should be related to work, three weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven D, the public hearing agenda item thirty-one shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second. Item thirty-two, ordinance authorizing the issue of purchase order to U.S. Peroxide for Chemical Injection System at the twenty-second Washington Street Joint Use Facility.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two is today. Are any proponents, please? Saying none, any opponents? Saying none, public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-three, ordinance to approve the execution of an amended agreement for fire and emergency service between the city and the Elkhorn Suburban Fire District number two.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please? Saying none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-four, ordinance to amend section twenty-three one seventy-seven, changing the title of employment classification on its local area network specialist to network specialist without changing the salary range.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please? Saying none, any opponents, please? Saying none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-five, ordinance to amend section twenty-three dash one seventy-seven concerning employment classifications by adding in the employment classification entitled Community Safety Education Specialist.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please? Saying none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-six, ordinance to transfer funds from unaccomer appropriation balance in the two thousand fourteen general fund budget today Omaha at the two thousand fourteen year-end closing ordinance.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Any proponents, please? Saying none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions for Mr. Curtis, our finance director, on this transfer ordinance for the, what would be the two thousand sixteen budget. So we talked about this a bit in Finance Committee and a bit this morning. Just wanted to confirm a few things this afternoon, too, and just talk a little bit about what this means, because it is a large amount of money moving forward to the two thousand sixteen budget. So let me start by saying, this is the year-end report, obviously, and the year-end closing, and this represents a transfer that by city charter must be transferred to the two thousand sixteen budget that we'll get in a month or two here. Can you tell us, it looks like there's a thirteen million dollar carryover. It would be accurate to characterize it as about half of that is from increased revenue, more revenue than was budgeted, and about half of that is from departments being under their budget, correct?
Yes, Steve Curtis, City Finance. About six point five million was from revenue being greater than expected, the most significant being sales tax, both in sales tax receipts and then the sales tax refunds being less than we had anticipated. On the expenditure side, it was about seven point two million. A large portion of that would have been healthcare, the rest being attrition, and then some miscellaneous items.
Okay. And our revenues are coming in as expected, with exception of sales tax, which is doing better than we're expecting because the economy is doing well. Would that be an accurate statement, too?
That is correct. The restaurant tax didn't seem to be quite following that logic, but it's not falling too far off. But that is correct, yes.
And one thing that caught my eye this morning, and you referenced it just now, but just an explanation for folks if they're reading this or seeing the paperwork. The department that was by far the most underspent by about three point three million dollars was the police department. And so that caught my eye in a time of when we're thinking about resources for the police and know we have great needs there. That was a question mark that rose in my head, but you discussed it this morning, and I think it's due to healthcare costs, right?
Yeah, remember, they are the largest department, too. So by numbers, they're probably going to be one of the larger savings. They have a lot of healthcare savings and some attrition, because when they lose an officer to retirement or a civilian, it takes them a while to get them through a class and back on the street.
Okay. And citywide, then, we must be doing pretty well on our healthcare costs in terms of them being under budget?
Yeah, I would say in fourteen, which was what you're looking at here, we probably budgeted very conservatively, and in fifteen, we tried to tighten that gap a little bit.
Okay.
But we are running below the national trend as far as our growth.
Okay. And then, so we're transferring nine million dollars into the general fund. The other funds we talked about here are the contingent liability reserve fund, about three point three million dollars into that, which is a pretty large sum and larger than usual, which for the most part pertains to legal settlements, but we talked this morning, and we aren't anticipating anything coming up in that regard, but it's something you just feel is pertinent to do right now, right?
Yeah, if you remember, we had about eight million anticipated by the end of fifteen through the budget process. This adds about another four million to both of those funds. I kind of look at cash reserve and contingency as somewhat both the cash reserve. The cash reserve fund itself does have the four percent requirement, although even that's awarded so that, you know, it can be navigated around a little bit. But that four percent of general fund cap would suggest that the cash reserve fund ought to be at about fourteen million. And then contingency is not limited, but that is a slightly easier fund to use resources from.
And that takes it up to about five million dollars?
Yes. So the total will be just slightly south of twelve million dollars between the two funds.
Okay. Yeah, and the million dollars you referenced to the cash reserve, for, you know, for the same reasons you just noted there, I think, is a good move. Talk about the capital improvement fund, too. So it transfers five hundred thousand dollars into that, but leaves it with four hundred thousand dollars, which means it must have a deficit now, right?
It has a receivable. Some of that money is used to match various federal grants, so there's a receivable that would bring it back to about zero. The five hundred thousand that's going in there is anticipated to help parks replace some antiquated equipment they have.
Yeah, to be, which is being spent this year for equipment they need, right?
It will be spent in fifteen, more than likely, yes, because it's transferred to another fund, and it's a capital need.
So they'll receive a supplement to their budget this year to do that, but then this replenishes that fund in sixteen?
Yeah, actually, this particular transfer, the general fund transfer is only one that can be transferred general fund to general fund with a two-year gap. The others can go directly into those other funds.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, I think that's all ahead for now. It does transfer nine million dollars into the general fund. I think, you know, given the council president's comments earlier in the meeting, and certainly the briefing we had this morning, I hope that's something we're considering and will assist us in some of the needs we have when it pertains to police funding and certainly our street funding, since there are great needs. And this is, for the second year in a row, fortunately, an unusual amount that we're able to transfer forward for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. No other lights? Mr. Clerk?
Pursuant to City Council Rule seven D, the public hearing on agenda items thirty-seven through forty-two shall be held on their third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven C, the public hearing on agenda items number forty-three through forty-four shall be held on the second reading. One additional resolution, item forty-five, resolution that council members Thompson, Gurnat, and Pauls shall assess damages, if any, to owners and parties affected by the vacation of Bob Gibson Boulevard right of way between Tenth and Thirteenth Street and a portion of Tenth Street right of way north of Bob Gibson Boulevard.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five is today. Are there any proponents? Saying none, any opponents? Second. Been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just like to record to show that on item number nine, that that was not in my district. Up in that area, Dodge Street is my cutoff, so that was not, that was not me.
Okay. All right.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Three oh one. PM, we stand adjourned.